Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to Blackwood Middle School, and welcome to our April 28, 2015 Richland County School District Board of Trustees meeting. Thank you very much for being here tonight. Thank you for your patience as we are just returning from executive session. And we appreciate all of you who are here tonight. At this time, we're going to stand and we're going to have our inspirational moment by Dr. Sherwood Caution Parker, and then the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. As we work together as a district and we face our challenges regarding the budget and other issues, one is confident that the decisions that we make will be made with professionalism and with wisdom to make sure we're making the best choices for our children and our community. And just as we all face issues to resolve things in our personal lives, it's never easy. But we have something called inner strength, and I just want to share a point with you. What is inner strength? We may not know we have it until we are well into the race, or feel we are nearly overwhelmed by challenges we face. But then we look much deeper for the power to succeed and find that we have an inner strength that meets our greatest need. Thank you. You say the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You may be seated. Thank you, Dr. Caution Parker, very much for that.
Thank you.
Certainly, I want to thank all of you for being here and for some of our special guests who are with us tonight, and certainly want to recognize one of them, and that's Mr. Paul Brawley, who is the Richland County Auditor. Who's in the audience? Mr. Brawley is over here to our right. Thank you, Mr. Paul, for being here, and welcome. He helps us make sure that we have enough money to do what we need to do to educate all of our kids in our school districts. So we thank him for his support. Now on our agenda, next on our agenda is the approval of our current agenda. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Seconded.
Removed by Mr. Manning, seconded by Ms. Brill. Any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is student focus. Dr. Hamm.
Yes, tonight's student focus will focus on the students right here at Blackwood Middle School, so I'd like to call on Principal Charis Muziek.
First, I'd like to recognize our board members. On behalf of Blackwood Middle School, we'd like to thank you all for choosing Blackwood tonight. Next, our executive staff, thank you all for being with us tonight. We'd like to spotlight our Charge of Pride program, and so at this time, we'd like to invite them in. We have a video presentation that they will be presenting on tonight.
Is the video coming in?
Yeah.
Along with Captain Collaborator and our mascot, votes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My coat.
Very cute.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our videos are gone, so this time, I'd like Nurse Ladd and one of our students to come up and share a little bit more about the Charge of Pride program and the healthy snacks initiative at this time.
Thank you for being with us tonight. We have an after-school program that I'm really proud of. It's the Charge of Pride program. Mr. Evans is our advisor, and he's been very supportive of us providing some healthy snacks to the kids. At first, there was a lot of grumbling. I think a lot of kids learned that celery, that they've never had it before, but one of the favorite snacks has been our smoothies, so I hope you enjoy it tonight. Kids will be very involved and help work real hard this afternoon to make them around. Thank you.
I would really like to tell you what's in your smoothie.
Okay. I suppose these are made of strawberries, bananas, honey instead of sugar, and apples. I hope you enjoy them.
Well, board members, if you would take your smoothie and executive staff, unless it honors the students, take a drink of our smoothie.
Cheers.
This year, we decided our Charge of Pride after-school program would be a great place to target some of our education efforts for the Healthy Snacks Initiative. We've used this opportunity to teach our students some important information about nutrition and how they can use this knowledge to make healthier after-school snacks. I'd like to introduce you to one of our Charge of Pride students who's going to share some information about one of the healthy snacks we made recently in the Charge of Pride program. Erin?
I attend the Charge of Pride after-school program. We do all sorts of activities. Most of them was learning about healthy snacks. Our nurse, Ms. Ladd, working with students to research healthy snack recipes on our phone books, and we chose smoothie recipes to present and serve during Charge of Pride after-school. We also made posters and looked at nutritional information about our food snack, and compared it to other drinks like Coke and Wout. When we compared the two, there was a big difference in calories and nutrition. Tonight, we would like to serve our guests a sample of one of the healthy smoothie recipes we made during Charge of Pride. Our smoothies contain all-natural apple juice, bananas, frozen strawberries, and honey. I learned it was possible to have a healthy snack that also tastes great. I hope you enjoy your smoothies.
We're going to show a short video and sing a song called "Five Hundred Twenty-Five Thousand Six Hundred Minutes." The video is really capturing our year here at Blackwood Middle School, so we hope you enjoy it. it's come to our attention that we have a very special occasion. Don't worry, staff, I'm not going to make you sing, but why don't y'all come and applaud right over here right next to us, and we have a very special occasion, special event I had a fabulous blockbuster birthday cake from Blackwood Middle School, this beautiful we're going to sing.
(Music)
song. Thank you for making it a special day. Love to you all. Wonderful.
Let's give our Blackwood Community School another hand, if you will. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Muziek, and all the teachers and chorus and orchestra for your participation as they exit. We want to thank them for the warm hospitality tonight that we felt being here. Next on our agenda is our public participation. No one has signed up to speak to the board, however, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to come and address the board, you may feel free to do so at this time by coming to the podium. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is our consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to approve this consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Brill.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Plank. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Manning.
Just a very quick comment, and I don't know if staff wants to elaborate, but just for information, the online registration is expanding this year, is that correct?
Yes, the Blackwood Board is expanding. They're continuing this for a second year of these online registrations.
So I just, more of another way to announce that parents know to go online and make sure to register your students, and cuts down on paperwork and makes the process a lot easier. So please look into that and contact the district if you have any questions about it. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manning. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. And I did jump out of order there, so I apologize. Back on track now. Next on the agenda is voting on the executive session items. Chair will entertain a motion on stu-
Special recognitions.
Yeah, I'm really out of order. Thank you, Jill. Next on the agenda is our special recognition. Dr. Hamm.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Libby Ruth, our Executive Director of Communications, will be announcing our special recognitions this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Hamm, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff, members of community, parents and students. Tonight, we have lots of awards to recognize, and many of them are students, so I'm going to go ahead and say, as our students are called up and recognized, if after they get their awards, they want to slip out and go on home, we know that tomorrow, we're still in testing, and we stress getting to bed early and getting that good night's sleep. So feel free, students and parents, after you get your award, if you want to slip on out, you are certainly welcome to do that. We are going to begin with Joseph Keel's Elementary School, which is named this year a National Beta Club School of Distinction by the National Beta Club. So we have Principal Alvera Butler, Beta Club Advisor, staff members Jasmine Spain and Latarcha Cleckley, as well as club officers, students Jaden Jeffrey, who's president, Kyrie Samuels, Vice President, Shania Meyer, Secretary, and Damonte Sanders, Treasurer. As they are coming forward, let me tell you how they won the award. They received the award for increasing membership. Schools that show at least a 10% increase receive the designation. What this award speaks to is Keel's commitment to academic rigor. So by increasing the membership, it shows that more and more students are achieving great success and being honored by being members of the Beta Club. So it demonstrates their dedication to preparing students ultimately for college and career readiness. We're excited to recognize their achievements and congratulate the students and staff for their commitment to excellence. Principal Butler, will you stay up front? You don't get to go home quite yet, because you received an individual award that we are very proud about and we want to announce tonight. Ms. Butler was selected as the recipient of the South Carolina Engaged Community Partner Award. She was nominated for her work with the Joseph Keels and USC Strings Project Consortium, which has benefited both learning communities. With a grant from the Hootie and the Blowfish Foundation, Keel's students are able to travel to USC to learn to play the violin, and USC music student teachers have the unique opportunity to come to Keel's to work with the students. Ms. Butler was presented the award at a summit earlier this month. We are very proud of you and congratulations. Now, we have three talented student artists who won top awards from the South Carolina Economics Concepts Poster Challenge. They are Paige Burke and Amaya Johnson from the Lonnie B. Nelson ACE Program, if you'll want to make your way forward, along with Nyla Hicks from Summit Parkway Middle. We have Dawn Smith, the ACE lead teacher from Lonnie B. Nelson, and Principals Karen Beeman and Andrew Barbeau. If all of you want to come forward. More than 900 students submitted posters to the Darla Moore School of Business for this contest, and 16 were selected to be a part of the Economic Concept Calendar. Out of those 16, three of them were our very own students. So they will be part of this calendar, and I also heard that your birthdays, which are going to be noted on the calendar that's going to go out across the state, so you may get lots of birthday cards this year. The contest is a way for students to have fun with economics while reviewing the economic concepts and principles that are part of South Carolina state standards. We congratulate you and are looking forward to seeing the calendar.
Sure.
We'll now turn our attention to our high schools, and we have the award-winning Westwood High School Student Council represented tonight, when I call your name, please come forward, by Nick Hooks, Bailey Byrd, Lauren Drescher, Xavier Varan, and Diamond De La Rosa, and Advisor Janet Frick, and of course, Principal Ralph Schmidt. Now, Westwood High School, from what I understand, is the smallest 4A school in the state, but that didn't stop them from being named the 4A Student Council of the Year at the South Carolina Association of Student Council's Annual Convention, which was held last month. And I believe that Mr. Schmidt will tell you the story that they would have won the award last year, but they told him it was their first year.
We were the 3A student.
3A student, last year.
The first year, we didn't have enough.
Didn't have enough. But they have not taken long at all to make their mark on student councils in South Carolina. They were also named the 2015 National Gold Council of Excellence Award winner by the National Association of Student Councils, and it just goes to show how dedicated they are to have a well-rounded program that demonstrates leadership training for council members, teachers and staff appreciation activities, student recognition programs, community service projects, spirit, and much more. Congratulations. Principal Schmidt, before you get too far, yeah, turn on back around. And Westwood student Aja Charles and FBLA Advisor Tracy Wilber, please come forward if you're here. Are they with us tonight?
Ms. Wilber's here.
Okay. Well, we'll let Ms. Wilber come up and Ralph Schmidt, so we can tell you about Aja, because she won a first-place award for her business plan at the recent Future Business Leaders of America State Leadership Conference. She wrote and presented a business plan for an art gallery that she plans to open one day. You may recognize Aja's name, because she's already out there selling artwork. She was the student who was picked by a town in Louisiana to have her artwork displayed as part of their Black History Month art contest, and I believe Mr. Schmidt has a print of that, of that. So she's already well on her way with her business plan, and we congratulate her. Thank you, Ms. Wilber, for being here. One more, one more. This person really doesn't need any more introductions, and Shelley, who I think keeps tally, believes that Coach Rodney Summers has been recognized at this year's board meeting more than any other person. So Coach Summers, come on up. He's had a banner year, as we all know. First, he was named the 4A Upper State Coach of the Year, and then the Coach of the Year by the South Carolina Football Coaches Association. Well, now, he has been awarded the South Carolina Strength Coach of the Year by the South Carolina Athletic Coaches Association. Rodney was one of three coaches nominated by the association and chosen by the Athletic Coaches Association Board of Directors. He will be honored at a banquet in July. Another banquet, another award. Congratulations, Coach Summers. Now, we have Richland Northeast High School awards to recognize. We have Shania Gregerson and her Navy Junior ROTC Commander Sergeant Major Gary Daniels to come forward, and Dr. Sabrina Suber, her principal. Shania won first place in the unarmed drilled competition at the Navy Nationals Competition in Pensacola, Florida. The competition started with 600 cadets participating in this drill, and as the drill went along, one by one, the different cadets are eliminated based on what their progress is doing. And at the end of the competition, one cadet was still standing, and that was our very own Shania. So what an achievement for her. She's also a great academic student. She heads up the academic team, serves as the Public Affairs Officer and a classroom leader, and she plans to join the Marine Corps when she graduates in June. Congratulations, Shania. Dr. Suber, you want to hang up, hang around? Because we're going to bring up two FBLA students from Richland Northeast, if they're here tonight, Daquan Buras and Josh Eppertly, along with their advisors Hannah Johnson and Shatina Mason. Daquan and Josh teamed up together at the Future Business Leaders State Leadership Conference and won first place for marketing. This competition included 100-question exam on marketing fundamentals and a role-playing solution for a random marketing problem. As you can see by its description, this is a tough competition, and they brought home the first-place award, and I believe you're headed to Nationals. Congratulations and good luck. We have three groups from Ridgeview High School tonight. So first, we'll call up the students who attended the Spring Convention of the South Carolina Junior Classical League. Please come forward as I call your name. Grace Justin, Megan Jennings, and Rachel Davis, along with your advisor, Dr. Richard Lucier, and Principal Dr. Brenda MacFosworth. I think we've got some coming for you. These young ladies earned the first-ever Competitive Latin Trophy for the school in the Lower Cartamin Latin II Competition. The Cartamin is a Quiz Bowl-style game that tests teams on classics, classic-related topics such as Roman history, mythology, and Latin literature, grammar, and vocabulary. They, ten extremely competitive teams, fought for first place, and Ridgeview came out on top. Congratulations. Next, to come up front from Ridgeview, Devon Holder, who is a DECA student, and his advisor, Mrs. Pat Jackson. DECA, which was previously referred to as Distributive Education Clubs of America, prepares leaders and entrepreneurs for careers in business. At the recent state conference, Devon won first place in the Virtual Business Personal Finance Challenge I and Challenge II, so he is certainly well on his way to be a leader and an entrepreneur. In addition, Mrs. Jackson, who has been Ridgeview's DECA advisor for many years, was reappointed to the South Carolina DECA Board of Directors. Congratulations. Also, from Ridgeview, we have five Gold Winners from the recent HOSA State Leadership Conference, if they can make their way forward. Missouri Jenkins, Whitney Napier, Sarah Purrier, Kayla Reeves, I believe who may not be able to be here, and Preston Williams, and their advisors Diane Melton and Mary Harmon. HOSA stands for Health Occupation Students of America, and the Public Health Team from Ridgeview came out on top with their work for PTSD and secondhand stress. This is a great project. When I read this, I was just so amazed. Because of the high number of military families affected by PTSD, these young blazers created teal bracelets and shirts and plan to present their campaign to organizations for public awareness. Each of the medalists will attend the National HOSA Competition in Anaheim, California. Just a little side note, I attended a community event for Fort Jackson to talk about how much we appreciate Fort Jackson, and these students really put action to the words that I said, and that's very impressive, and congratulations on your award. Martin Lee from Spring Valley High School is here, so we're going to ask him to come forward, along with this principal, Jeff Timoney. This was another project I read about, and I went, wow. Martin won the 2014 Young Innovator Award from Innovision, South Carolina's Technology Award Program, for his floor tile invention. Martin learned of a British company that had come up with a floor tile that generated electricity when you stepped on it, but he was disappointed to learn that it only worked if you stepped on the exact center, and that one tile cost $4,000. So he set out to produce an inexpensive version using common materials such as a bathroom scale and a play school top, and he found success for about $100. Congratulations, Martin. Keep up the great work. And now, I'm very proud to be able to honor some of my coworkers from the district's communications and strategic partnership team. and Shatina Mason. Daquan and Josh teamed up together at the Future Business Leaders State Leadership Conference and won first place for marketing. This competition included 100-question exam on marketing fundamentals and a role-playing solution for a random marketing problem. As you can see by its description, this is a tough competition, and they brought home the first-place award. And I believe you're headed to Nationals. Congratulations and good luck. We have three groups from Ridgeview High School tonight. So first, we'll call up the students who attended the Spring Convention of the South Carolina Junior Classical League. Please come forward as we call your name. Grace Justin, Megan Jennings, and Rachel Davis, along with your advisor, Dr. Richard Lucier, and Principal Dr. Brenda Mack Foxworth. I think we've got some coming for you. These young ladies earned the first-ever Competitive Latin Trophy for the school in the Lower Cartamin Latin II Competition. The Cartamin is a Quiz Bowl-style game that tests teams on classics, classic-related topics such as Roman history, mythology, and Latin literature, grammar, and vocabulary. They ten extremely competitive teams vied for first place, and Ridgeview came out on top. Congratulations. Next, to come up front from Ridgeview, Devon Holder, who is a DECA student, and his advisor, Mrs. Pat Jackson. DECA, which was previously referred to as Distributive Education Clubs of America, prepares leaders and entrepreneurs for careers in business. At the recent state conference, Devon won first place in the Virtual Business Personal Finance Challenge I and Challenge II. So he is certainly well on his way to be a leader and an entrepreneur. In addition, Mrs. Jackson, who has been Ridgeview's DECA advisor for many years, was reappointed to the South Carolina DECA Board of Directors. Congratulations. Also, from Ridgeview, we have five Gold Winners from the recent HOSA State Leadership Conference, if they can make their way forward. Missouri Jenkins, Whitney Naper, Sarah Purrier, Kayla Reeves, I believe who may not be able to be here, and Preston Williams, and their advisors Diane Melton and Mary Harmon. HOSA stands for Health Occupation Students of America, and the Public Health Team from Ridgeview came out on top with their work for PTSD and secondhand stress. This is a great project. When I read this, I was just so amazed. Because of the high number of military families affected by PTSD, these young blazers created teal bracelets and shirts and plan to present their campaign to organizations for public awareness. Each of the medalists will attend the National HOSA Competition in Anaheim, California. Just a little side note, I attended a community event for Fort Jackson to talk about how much we appreciate Fort Jackson, and these students really put action to the words that I said, and that's very impressive. And congratulations on your award. Martin Lee from Spring Valley High School is here, so we're going to ask him to come forward, along with this principal, Jeff Timoney. This was another project I read about and I went, wow. Martin won the 2014 Young Innovator Award from Innovision, South Carolina's Technology Award Program, for his floor tile invention. Martin learned of a British company that had come up with a floor tile that generated electricity when you stepped on it. But he was disappointed to learn that it only worked if you stepped on the exact center and that one tile cost $4,000. So he set out to produce an inexpensive version using common materials such as a bathroom scale and a play school top, and he found success for about $100. Congratulations, Martin. Keep up the great work. And now, I'm very proud to be able to honor some of my coworkers from the district's Communications and Strategic Partnership Team. Joe Burke, you're going to have to set the camera down and come up front, and I think Shelley, you'll come take the picture. One of our team members, Ishmael Abdu Sabour, unfortunately cannot be here, she had a death in the family, is out of town. But Joe and Ish won awards with the South Carolina National School Public Relations Association. They both won what's called a Rewards for Excellence in the category of publications and electronic media. Hold on a second, Joe, set the camera down. Not everybody in the Communications Department, we can't all operate the camera. Joe serves as our communications. I think so. Joe serves as the Communications Coordinator. Okay, while he's doing one more, let me tell you. Joe won the award for a video that I hope you all have had a chance to watch, and if not, please go on our YouTube channel. It's the Get to Know Richland II, and he made it with some of the latest special effects. And it's a very informative video about the district, and we've shown it at several events. Ish, who's our website and social media manager, won the award for A Day in the Life series and our U and II blog about the happenings around the district, and those are two things that you can follow as well. So congratulations to members of my team. I have a great team, and I'm always very proud of all of them. Even those of us who get challenged by cameras, me too. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I had quite a few special recognitions, and we certainly want to thank you very much for indulging us as we honor. As you can imagine, as we get to the end of our school year, it demonstrates the level of excellence that exists in our district, that so many of our students and teachers and student clubs and organizations, as well as our administrative team members, are getting the recognition for the high level of work and high quality of excellence, excellent work that goes on in our district. So thank you very much for that. Next on our agenda is voting on the executive session items. Chair will entertain a motion on the student appeals.
Mr. Chair, I have a motion the following. Student number one, Blythewood Academy. Student number two, Blythewood Academy. Student number three, back to homeschool with strict probation and LARADAC. Student number four, back to the homeschool, strict probation and LARADAC. Student number five, back to homeschool with strict probation. Student number six, back to homeschool with strict probation and LARADAC. Student number seven, back to homeschool with strict probation and LARADAC. Student number eight, Blythewood Academy. Student number nine, Blythewood Academy. Student number 10, deny the appeal. Student number 11, Anna Boyd. And on the addendum, student number one, Blythewood Academy.
You've heard the motion from Mr. Plank, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Elkes Johnson, any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Next, under voting on executive session items, the chair will entertain a motion on legal matter.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we table legal matters to another time so that the changes that have been requested can be made.
The move by Mr. Manning, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Mackey, any discussion? Motion passes 7-0, thank you very much. Next on our agenda, under Old Business Action Requested, the approval of the general fund budget for 2015-2016. Dr. Hamm?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the past several months, we've been working diligently on a proposal for the budget for 2015-16. Dr. Harry Miley will be making that presentation.
Thank you. Chairman Jackson, members of the board, Dr. Hamm, and the members of the audience. I have for you, I think, a presentation on PowerPoint, other than middle school success, which is important. But I'm not qualified to opine on that. So, I'm going to continue from last night's public work session that we discussed the budget. The reasons for the budget that we have this year, the growth in the district, the pressures from state funding, the elimination of several at-risk and lottery funds, the pressure that puts on our budget. And based on that meeting last night, your direction to us was to come back with you to, with a budget with a 10-mil max, which is our current cap, based on 10 mils, a budget based on that, and a budget based on a 10-mil cap and a 3.5-mil look-back provision, and so that would be a total of 13.5 mils. You have that, those two budgets in front of you. We have it on the presentation up here. We can, at your direction, I'll be glad to go through these. As you saw from last night, the 10-mil, the 10-mil cap, based on the current mill value and state allocations, all of which are still tentative at this time. State allocations won't be finalized until the state budget's passed in June and actually through the veto process with the governor, but we all are operating with the best information we have at this point. A 10-mil increase would generate $10.412 million. We have those revenues primarily from property taxes, state allocation from Education Finance Act, and a few other sources to total a total increase of $10.4 million, which would put our general fund budget for next year at $245,327,000. You have both the revenue distribution and expenditures in front of you in terms of the allocation of those funds proposed in that 10-mil increase. You also have a listing of the proposed incremental expenditures that we would use those new funds for. Some of those are mandated by state law, step increase for teachers, as we've discussed, health insurance increases, retirement increases that we are not allowed to pass on to the employees, so those are all absorbed by the district. We also have about $2 million, as we've discussed, about $2 million that we need to absorb from now shifting to general fund that were, we did have resources from lottery funds and from at-risk funds that we no longer have. So those are, while we are saying that it's $10.4 million, it's actually $8.4 million of new funds to spend. And as you know from last night, that's well below our average increase, our increase in student enrollment isn't below average, but that's a below-average increase in our budget over the last five years. You also have the, an alternative budget that we have recommended that would have the 10-mil cap and a 3.5-mil look-back provision. That's a state law that allows municipalities, counties, and school districts to reach back and use any unused mills based on the Act 388 Millage Rate Cap. We've suggested that that, to use that, in fact, if we don't use that year's 3.5 unused millage this year, we will use that. That generates about $960,000 for our recurring expenditures, and that brings us up to an $11.371 million, $11.371 million increment to our budget for a total budget of $246,287, $87,000. You have the allocation of those funds on your other sheet that has the incremental programs that we would fund with those programs. Again, they're very identical, except that list is a little bit longer with other needs of the district. We discussed last night, and I don't want to forget to mention that again, we feel like we have been through the vetting process and the determination of the district's needs from employees, staff, board members, departments, principals, community, and to formulate these spending plans. With that, I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Dr. Miley. Questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Manning.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the 10-mil budget with the 3.5-mil look-back, with one change to the existing line item budget. Item number 45, I'd like to change that to hall monitors, but leave the amount the same.
Been a motion, is there a second?
Mr. Chair, I have questions before we begin to make motions on the budget.
Well, we've got a motion on the floor, we got a second, then we'll have a debate and discussion. It's been seconded by, is it Dr. Carson Parker?
Yes, sir.
Second, now we open discussion. Dr. Elkes Johnson.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair, just a few questions.
Sure.
First, I want to go back to the ROTC program at Westwood High School.
Yes, ma'am.
I noticed that we don't have the funds to support the ROTC program at Westwood. Do we have the funds for the programs at the other high schools?
We don't have, well, I think it is included in the budget recommendation. Yes, we do have it in the recommendation. Oh, you mean we don't have it now? Well, that, that program, and Ralph, is Ralph still in the room? Ralph still in the room? That program was started, and we are in line for military funding, federal funding for that. And they have promised us, I believe, each year that we were next. And we keep getting told that, well, we don't have the spot for you, we have to wait for a program to close somewhere else in the country, and then you're eligible. So right now, and my understanding and what we've been told is a very important program and a very successful program at Westwood, and so that, that's why it's included, so we can continue that program until we get federal funding.
But do we receive federal funding for the other high schools?
Yes, that's, that's the issue, is that we want that program there, we're in line to get federal money, and until it gets here, we feel it's a very important program to fund.
Okay, just a few more questions.
Sure, ma'am.
The lead behavior support specialist, can someone explain exactly what that is and where that person would be housed?
The lead support, yes, I believe.
Specialist.
Yes, Dr. Vickery can. This was originally three positions. We didn't feel like we could include all three at once this year, so we, that's why I'm glad.
This position would be housed in the Department of Learning Support Services, which is in the Special Services Department. It's a result of some recommendations made from the Discipline Task Force and also from other initiatives going on in an effort to reduce discipline problems district-wide and to support the promotion of positive behaviors by very specific analysis of data and programming that reduces both discipline concerns and promotes pro-social, positive kinds of behaviors.
This salary of $96,200, does that include benefits? It doesn't?
Yes, it does. About 34% is our benefits.
The next question, the summer voucher days at the high school, it's a pilot program. Which high school will be receiving this?
All high schools.
All high schools?
Would receive the 20 vouchers, yes, ma'am.
The 20 vouchers for the, okay.
That also started at 40, 40 vouchers, and we reduced it to 20.
Okay, and the last question, we have been averaging about 5.8 growth in general funds over the past five years, which equates to about $12 million per year, and we've been averaging about 4.17% population and CPI growth over the same amount of time. Is this the only way that we can make up the difference by raising the taxes on businesses?
In this atmosphere that we have right now, you're right, that growth in revenues that we've had has been a product of, over the last five years, has been a product of growth in the district from mill value and from new mills that we've added. So that 5.8% growth has also been generated by additional mills also. But in our opinion, there is no other way to accomplish the needs and fund the needs of the district without this millage increase.
Okay, and I said, let me go back to what Mr. Manning asked. He was so kind to allow me to get the money for the pilot program of the foreign language. Can you tell me how many hall monitors that will cover?
Two.
Cover two hall monitors?
Yes, ma'am.
And how are we going to decide which schools receive those?
That's a decision over my pay grade, but I would assume that it would be based on needs of the schools and determining from the principals. You heard last night that one principal said, from a middle school, said, "Well, we're okay." So I would think that based on superintendent's review of the other principals and find out which ones are in the most needs, has the greatest needs.
Dr. Hamm, do you have an answer for that question?
I don't, but I think we could look at the data on discipline issues that could be handled by a hall monitor to find out where we have the largest number of incidents and base, use that as, the data itself as a basis for placing a hall monitor.
Okay, and I just want to make sure, since we don't have the funds to cover all of the middle schools, that this will be something that we would generate over a period of years to incorporate a hall monitor in all of the middle schools, because I think safety is our number-one priority.
Thank you, Dr. Elkes Johnson.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other question, other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Plank.
Dr. Miley, first of all, thank you so much for putting this together and your team. I appreciate all your hard work. The first couple of questions are more for affirmation, the third being clarity. First, that the line items that we see as proposed with the 13.5 have been vetted and in fact have been cut back, is that correct?
I can't say everyone hasn't, because for instance, the state mandates have not been cut back. But those programs that have been requested from principals and staff, I think if I remember right, the original funding request was about $18 million, which did not, it actually was 20-something, because the $18 million did not include, I should have said this earlier, it didn't include the state pay raise or the mandated health insurance or retirement. It was just programs from, from the district. So yes, I can't, I'd have to read every one, but just about every one has been reduced to make, to, that is, rather to have zero RTIs in the elementary schools instead of 15, like was asked, we said, "Okay, how about three a year?" And it won't, three help? Yes, three helps. Three's better than zero. And so, yes, just about every line item in here has been reduced.
Great. Second, just to affirm, is that, and like Dr. Elkes Johnson just mentioned, is that for the last five years, we've averaged about 5.8%. When we look at this year's request at the 13.5 mil, the net result, removing that offset for the EFA money and the Lotto and the.
At-risk money.
At-risk money. That nets out to about a 3.9% increase.
Correct.
Lower than the 5.8. And then the final thing is, in the 2014-15 year, the board had requested a 0-mil increase.
Correct.
My understanding is that the county then had come back with a 6.5%, or 6.5-mil Based on the budget that was submitted with the 0-mil increase, and, but yet, receiving funds there in theory that were at 6.5, one would logically conclude that there would be a surplus generated from the 6.5 mills. Has that surplus been realized, meaning that you guys were accurate, or has it been? Tell me where we are on that.
So far, we have not, we have, based on collections to date, we are not realizing that increase that we thought there would be. Based on revised estimates of mill value, the county revised our, in essence, well, the mill value is lower than we had, we had thought at the time, therefore, to generate the same amount of money, you need more mills. And so they adjusted that. At the time, we thought that, well, that will really, that will mean we would receive more funds. They were right and I was wrong. So we are not collecting more funds this year than we So, we are not collecting more funds this year than we had anticipated, and we, but we're right, right, as of the latest, we've checked, we're right in line to make our budget this year.
And I bring that up not to point out
Thank you.
I was wrong necessarily, but just to see, we, we are, the budget that was proposed last year is essentially the budget that it ends up being regardless of whether it was zero mil or six point five.
Several years in the past, yes, several years in the past, we've made healthy contributions to our fund balance based on revenues greater than expenditures and anticipate expenditures, both from the county taxes and from the state. This year, we are not anticipating that from either of those sources. We anticipate a balanced budget, but not any substantial increase above what we budgeted.
And therefore, the thirteen point five percent mil, the amount that is below the percentages is needed essentially for what we have outlined, as well as we're looking ahead for, for onboarding of a couple of schools as well.
Correct.
Thank you.
Other discussion?
Just a quick question.
Ms. Mackey.
I know we've had time to ask
All right, yes.
A good number of questions, and I appreciate all that you all have put into this as we've gone back and forth. Just a quick question I neglected to ask before, I know that you've mentioned a reduction in travel expenses and cellphone costs.
Yes.
Correct. Is that something that you're going to, are you going to look at reviewing your policy with regard to those, or just one-time reductions? Because I think that you've indicated that there may a prediction of budget, bleak budget times in the future.
In my opinion, that there's probably more funds that could be reduced, but at this time, what we, what we took the risk of saying is, we'll do that starting now, and we, we don't have a big plan right now to do that, but we know we can do that, and we may achieve greater savings, but right now, until we have that plan, and that we may be back here back this, this time next year and say, "Well, we were successful on this, and we see that there's other initiatives that we can take." But we felt like, given the size of the district, that those were two areas that we felt confident that if we addressed them now, that over the course of the next thirteen, fourteen months, we could achieve those savings. If we're wrong, but I'll be wrong again, it won't be the first time or the last, I'm sure. But, but that's our initiative, and we think that we can do that, and felt like it was important enough to take that initiative in order to generate some funds for other programs.
Other discussion?
Mr. Chair, one other question.
Dr. Elkins Johnson.
Dr. Miley, I know the county requested that we give them two budgets. Are we prepared to do that, and will you also submit that to the board for us to review?
At this time, we were going to submit one budget. Zero mil, the, the county had asked for a zero-dollar increase budget. That would mean we would, in order to make the state mandates, we would have to fire people. In order to fund just the state mandates with no new dollars, we would have to lay people off.
I guess that's not my question. Again, my question is, are we going to present the two budgets that they requested with the zero and with what the board has agreed on the millage?
My recommendation is that we don't, but that's, you're the board, and at your direction, I'll do what you want me to do.
Thank you. Other discussion? Let me say, Dr. Miley, that I also appreciate the tremendous effort and hard work that's going into this process this year, and I certainly wanted to allow my board members to have the opportunity to share their thoughts and comments and ask their questions before we took our vote. One of the things that I think I asked you before, and that is that based upon this, this, this leap of, I won't say leap of faith, but this, this giant step that we've taken this year, which is very uncharacteristic of our district in terms of going to the max and above, and I want to have that on record, to say that we have been not only prudent, but we have been good stewards of the public's dollars, but by taking the necessary step this year, hopefully, it will put us in a position next year, if things remain as they are, that it will not require us to do anything of this magnitude, I'll say it that way, at all. Would you confirm or deny that?
Yes, sir, I agree. I, I can't predict the future, but
Of course not.
We certainly hope that the local economy has, continues to recover, so mill values will hopefully go back up some. We expect the state to continue the funding, but not greatly increase it, but we think that with these initiatives, that we will generate adequate funds to put us in a better position this time next year.
The collection rate is, do you guys notice, right now, it's running at about ninety-seven some, what percent is it, the cabinet idea, and, I mean, I guess what I'm asking is, if it's as high as I think it is, averaging, there's not a lot of whole, there's not a whole lot more that we're going to do, we're never going to get a hundred percent, so there's not a whole lot of money out there unbeing uncollected. Again, is that a true statement?
Yes, averages usually on current collections, and the auditor's here, he can add to this, around ninety-four, ninety-five percent, then there's delinquencies and penalties that are collected after the, after the fiscal year is over, that usually adds two to three percentage points. So, on the, on the yearly accrual basis, it's usually in ninety-six, ninety-seven, has been as high as ninety-eight over the last ten years, so, correct, we don't see any tremendous windfall from
That's correct.
The collections. Yes, ma'am.
Other questions, other comments, or discussion period? If not, there's a motion on the floor, it's been seconded to approve the budget recommendation from staff that includes a ten mil increase plus the three point five percent look-back feature with the, included in that motion with the recommendation or the motion to change the line item that includes funding for Teaching Rural Language Pilot Project to transfer that to, cover the two positions for the hall monitors. That's been moved, has been seconded, if no more further discussion, we're ready to Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And let me say again to my colleagues and board members, I appreciate your, your thoroughness and your, your detail and concern about the fate of our district as it relates to the resources that we currently have and those that we hope to get in the future. So, thank you so much for your, your due diligence in terms of looking and examining very closely, making some very prudent recommendations to strengthen our position from a resource standpoint. So, I just want to publicly say that to, to board members. At this time, under new business action requested, is the approval of the Comprehensive Health Education Committee, Dr. Ham?
Ms. Nancy Gregory will be presenting that information.
Good evening, Mr. Jackson, board members, and Dr. Ham. Tonight, we bring you an updated list, a slate of committee members for the district's Comprehensive Health Committee. By law, districts are required to maintain a thirteen-member advisory group to oversee their comprehensive health education programs. We are submitting an updated list of committee members in the categories specified by the law for your approval to formalize this process. Any questions?
Questions or comments on the board? Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
That's an actual question, do we have to lose?
We will, I'll need a motion from the board.
A motion that we accept, the, the committee is presented.
Been moved by Mr. Manning, seconded by Ms. Brill, any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda, under new business, no action requested, is progress report on the district's party middle school success, Dr. Ham?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as you know, the district identified nine priority areas that we would work on this school year. One of them was to improve the academic success of our middle schools. What you're getting this evening will be a progress report of something that's an activity that is continuing, we want to get you up to date on the work that's been done to improve academic achievement at the middle school. Ms. Nancy Gregory will be followed by Dr. Marsha Mosley with this presentation.
Right, good evening.
Good evening.
As Dr. Ham said, middle school success is one of the district's nine priority areas for improvement, and tonight, we're going to share updates on our initiatives. And to begin, we would like to introduce our dynamic middle school team to make sure you know who all the players are. I'm going to start with Carrie Meldrum, and I'm going to ask them to stand. Carrie Meldrum is our math specialist. Dewanna Smith, Dewanna Smith is the ELA content specialist. Margaret Schillet, Margaret Schillet is the middle and high school social studies specialist. And Dina Spicker, the newest member of our team, is the middle and high school science specialist. They're a dynamic team, and they've done a great job, and we're very excited for Dr. Mosley, who is the middle school team leader, to provide the report and share these initiatives with you. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Mosley.
Well, as you've just heard, we are one of Dr. Ham's nine priorities. So, let me just, as she likes to say, throw the skunk on the table and show you some of the reasons why. These are the percentages of students who have scored met or higher on ELA and pass. You'll notice, from two thousand nine to two thousand twelve, we started a decline. Briefly went up just a point or two in two thousand thirteen, and then back down in two, in twenty seventeen, in twenty fourteen, excuse me. Those numbers, to put it into a, a frame of how many points we're dropping, that's a six-point drop from two thousand nine to two thousand fourteen, so just to give you that perspective as well. Math hasn't fared much better either. So, from two thousand nine to two thousand ten, we had a dip, up a little bit in two thousand eleven. In twelve, we started down. In thirteen, we had a one-point increase last year. That, those percentages of a drop are a seven-point decrease, just to give you the context. So, in saying all that, what have we been doing? Well, the first thing we did is started collecting data. And while you'll see a variety of the data points we collected, I'm only going to highlight a couple of these in each one. But we looked at the map data and the pass data, we looked at state data, and then we looked at the district's data and just started drilling down to get really in the weeds. We looked at district, school, teacher, all the way down to student data. So, we looked deeply at the data, and then we got into the classrooms, because we wanted to see how that data was translating into the classroom, what were, what were the correlations that we could see. One of the things, the study groups that we did, and this was very interesting, because it's different, we took a group of seventh-grade students who had been high flyers in elementary school. They had been at the ninety-fifth percentile or above with their data, but when they hit middle school, we saw this data decline. So, the guidance counselors pulled them in and had some focus sessions with them. Now, these students knew that their data was not great, they knew that their grades had been slipping. But some of the information that you might find interesting came out of this study, and the children said, in elementary school, it was okay if you weren't right up with everybody else, if you were behind, but in middle school, it wasn't okay, that you were nine steps behind, so you just couldn't let it get ahead of you, in other words. They also talked about grading. They said at the elementary level, teachers would grade for completion or for effort, but this was not the case in middle school, that you were expected to know, and they talked about the pickiness of the teacher. One of the shifts that I think we see, those of us who have been in middle school any time, when children leave elementary school and go to middle school, their peer group expands, and typically, they leave that family kind of nest to a larger, more diverse population, and they, their peer group becomes of the utmost importance, especially in seventh grade. And these children, interestingly, said that they felt that their peer groups did not impact their grades whatsoever. So, that was, that was an interesting statement as, as they saw it. As we moved on, we knew from being in the classrooms that we needed to support our schools. You can see some of the ways that we supported our schools on the screen, but what I'd like to tell you about is something that we did that was a little bit different. We changed the model of our department leaders' meetings, which was basically a sit-and-get meeting where you were given a lot of facts that you needed to know to take back to your school. We turned these into content academies, so that this became not only the information-getting session, but a real session, a collaborative session for learning. And in doing so, we gave every middle school content area teacher a book, and every content specialist was the leader with that, with their group and the book study. So, everybody has been through a book study this year. What was different about that is if Carrie's book, excuse me, Ms. Meldrum's book, was on ratios and proportions, then she was modeling on the board, teaching lessons on ratio and proportions. As I went in, because Dewanna only joined us in January, when I took my ELA teachers in, if, if the chapter was on a workshop model for reading and writing so that you could converse with students, I actually put the teachers in a workshop model, so they would experience and know what, know what and how they needed to bring back to their classrooms. We did a variety of things. The science, Mariah worked with her group, and she used an Edmodo format, so she brought the technology in and talked with them about succeeding with inquiry in science and math. And Margaret worked with her small groups in document-based questions. So, we had a variety of things going on to really deepen their knowledge base, but we didn't stop there. We went into schools and spent whole days in schools in small group grade levels, and these meetings were so powerful, you typically had between three to five teachers at a grade level. So, in that small group, we created community, and it was safe. We saw what teachers knew, what they didn't understand, where there may be misconceptions. It was our formative assessment, so that we knew how to plan our next steps and how to guide our teachers. Other things we did, we went and did focus observations, where we went bell-to-bell and watched a teacher in her class with her students, and then set appointment times to go back and coach that teacher through the observation, what we saw, how she could deepen her knowledge. All of this was focused on deepening the effectiveness of the instructional strategies and deepening the content of the teachers. And then, of course, we had our whole group meetings, where we brought all the school teams together and took those broad topics that the Teaching and Learning Department has been working in, so that they were aware and they had a knowledge base to go back and work with their teachers as well. So, we did a lot with PD this year. These are some of the ways we built capacity. But the one that I think that, or the two I think that you'll find most informative is the cognitive rigor. I hear the board talk a lot about rigor in our classrooms, and yes, we know in middle school that we need to bump up that game with rigor. And rigor's hard to teach, because at times, it seems nebulous to teachers, but we chose the model with Webb's depth of knowledge. You'll hear it referred to as DOK, and it's on a one-to-four level. One is recall, and then it moves up the level, so that it gets more, increasingly more difficult. Let me tell you just a brief example of what this would look like. A level one question may give a child a chart or a graph, and the child is supposed to extract some of the information out of that graph to answer the question. Very simple, recall, look at the graph, extract the information. But if we move that up to the level of difficulty, to a level three, then the student may be giving multiple charts or graphs to look at, and multiple pieces of data to make sense of, to interpret. They may have to compare and contrast the data, and then they may have to make recommendations or evaluations based on that data. So, it looks increasingly difficult, or gets increasingly difficult, as the child moves up the level, to the level of rigor. Another way that we built capacity is using data for instruction. Now, you've heard us talk, or Ms. Gregory and others talk about the formative assessment that we've been dealing with. But formative assessment is something that we think is fairly new, teachers have heard about it, but they don't have a tendency to do it at a deeper level. But formative assessment should be happening throughout their class every single day, because it really informs your next steps as a teacher. But we also want them to learn to use summative assessment. Typically, teachers look at summative assessment and think, "It's how the child scored." Well, that's not the whole story. Well, that's not the whole story. We want teachers to look at this summative assessment as to how did I perform? Was there one group that did better than another group? And if so, why? Or if this student did well at this test or this level, why is he not doing so well? What am I, as a teacher, missing? So we want the teacher to become reflective in using their summative assessment. And in moving forward, we're excited. We're about to establish a task force. And this will look at all the issues that we have going on currently in middle school. And I can't wait to hear the conversations and to hear the next steps. And I'm sure that as you, Chairman Jackson, as I, am very, very concerned for our struggling and our fragile students, that we've asked our schools to provide their programs and what they do currently for their struggling and fragile students. And this is going to be a part of that task force. So I look forward to the suggestions that that task force will be coming out with. And finally, we really, at the middle school level, want to take care of the whole child, not just the academic realm. Because we know that middle schoolers, they really are between that child and young adult. They're the adolescent. And so it's not just the academics, it's the whole child. It's the social, it's the emotional, it's the physical. And that's what our team is really about. And finally, if you would just indulge me for a moment, I want to tell you just briefly about the women, these wonderful women that I get to work with. They are extremely intelligent. They are at the top of their field. They have a strong work ethic. And I hear you speak often about a sense of urgency. I can tell you, everything we do is with a sense of urgency because we know there's a child's life at stake here. And yet, their kindness and their compassion for the children that we work with and the teachers that we reach out to and for the families that we serve, these women are phenomenal with what they do. And I am blessed beyond measure to have them as part of my team. So thank you. To my principals who are hiding in the back, I want them to know that I realize that they are well-aware of the challenges that we face. Yet they are as determined as we are to help fix these problems. They focus also on working for the best interest of our children. They have welcomed our team into their buildings and they have partnered with us as we go through the day-to-day routines and we strive to help and move our children forward. Finally, I want to thank you, the board, for your continued support, but also for your patience as we move our scores in a positive direction. We're not where we want to be, but we all sincerely believe that we are well on the way to where we need to be. Thank you, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mosley. Questions, comments on the board?
Mr. Chair.
Dr. Elkins Johnson.
I have a question.
Sure.
If I understood you correctly, Dr. Mosley, you said that the elementary stu-, well, the middle school students stated that when they are in elementary school that the teachers graded for effort and completion. Is that something that you agree with?
That is my honest opinion. I think that teachers look at children and say, are you giving me your best? And I think there may be some children that if that is their best, then that may be. But keep in mind, that is one student's quote, and that may be how that child felt. So my opinions are just my opinions, but that was the student's quote.
So that was a quote of one student that you shared?
That was a quote that was shared in the report, yes.
So why did you choose to share that one quote?
Well, because we were given the report by the accountability department and that was something that was interesting. That was an interesting tidbit.
One other question. Have you shared this data with the elementary school teachers and principals? And what have you all put in place? Because I'm just thinking, during the science and social studies requirements, they're not normally taught every day in the elementary school. Science is not taught every day or social studies, they split up the time. So have you guys gotten with them to discuss this? And also, have you built more requirements for testing, projects, formative testing?
We do a lot of that. We do all of the above.
No, no, at the elementary level, have you shared this?
Well, since this report has just been done, I'm not sure if it's been shared with the elementary principals and staff. That would be, you know, that would have to go through, I guess, the elementary team leader and Ms. Gregory. But it's just come out, so we have only had this a week or so. So I can't answer that right now.
So Ms. Gregory, if you can answer that question, do you plan on sharing this information with the elementary principals and teachers? And do you have something in place for formative and summative assessments in science and social studies?
Yes, we share that. We have been working on all the assessment across all content areas. And this was a very small study. It's never going to be a data point. And it's going forward to deepen our work with the task force. So it was a very, very small study.
And keep in mind, if I could add, we wanted to know, these children have lost ground. We wanted to know why. What's going on that you did so well? And now you're falling by the wayside. I think middle school people generally know that it's such a huge shift that that may be just part of it. It's the immaturity at a level.
Thank you. Other questions or comments on the board?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Manning.
I'm very interested. I mean, we just approved a budget and we have some additional magnet programs that the board has committed to. It's part of the DNA of our district. It does cost us additional money to have those programs in place. And I want to be sure, if we do have those programs and they are engaging students and doing the things that they're supposed to do, are we seeing the outcomes from that at the middle school level? And I want to make sure that we're looking specifically at that for our money invested in those programs. You know, I understand that the children may like it, the parents may like it, but is it giving us the return on our educational dollars for those programs? And if they're not, I think we need to reevaluate what those magnets are designed to do and what the outcomes are specifically. And if they can't sustain themselves with academic increases, then I think we need to take a serious, seriously evaluate whether we maintain those or not.
I'd like to answer that question. We have just developed an evaluation process, a set of metrics, where we will have an ongoing evaluation of all our magnet programs, looking at what is working, what is not. We started putting things in place in the spring. But again, that will be ongoing to address the concerns that you have talked about, especially as we are growing new magnets. We are looking very carefully at what is working, what is not working.
And I also want to, slightly different twist, but also want to look at our honors classes as well and make sure that we are looking at that and making sure that we're not... We do need to look at, well, the comment fragile and...
Struggling.
Yes, we need to make sure we look at those students. I think we need to put a lot of focus, but I don't want to let our honor students go out.
Absolutely not. We are focused on that. In fact, that is on our agenda for this summer. We'll be working with groups of students with ELA and revising honors curriculum, writing questions that hit those upper-level DOK levels. And the math as well. But so that we really are looking to move children. We want to stretch every child as far as they can go, whether they're struggling or they're honors. We're not leaving anybody out.
And I think, good point that Dr. Elkins Johnson brought up too. In order for those children to succeed, I think we need to look at the accountability in elementary to make sure that their students are prepared. Because if we stretch them too far in middle, but we haven't prepared them for the elementary level, they may break, which is not what we want. Last question, as far as parent support. Because I think it's also troubling, and I'm not quite a middle school parent yet, but I've heard the stories. And I think sometimes academically, maybe some of our parents may struggle in support in middle school, whereas maybe they did in elementary. They may need different sets of tools. And I was wondering if we're looking at any kind of parent academies or parent support to help in the process.
That's generally a school-based decision. But I feel certain that our principals would be very receptive to that. I know we've done things like that in the past.
And that may be something that comes out of this task force to take us deeper into what we're doing with middle school.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments on the board? Mrs. Brill.
I was curious, have you compared the results of like the single gender programs and then, of course, TLC and law magnet and how those kids, how that looks compared to the other kids you're talking about?
We have looked at those, and I don't have that data with me right now, so I would hate to speculate. But we have broken out in the subsets. And I can get back with you on that. I'll have something and...
It may very well be that we need more magnets in middle school because I think those kids are maybe more highly motivated, perhaps.
Well, and I think that's another reason to evaluate and review the magnets we have in place and look at what we do need to revise, what we need to abandon, new magnets that we've talked about. But that needs to be an ongoing process.
Other questions or comments on the board? Nancy and Dr. Mosley, for me, a couple of questions. I just want to hear one at a chance. I'll be kind, I promise.
I know you will. You always are, I know you will.
What I read, I thought I read, help me, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought I read something that implied that because our enrollment in Algebra I went so drastically large, that it was going to be more restrictive now to eliminate maybe kids who weren't prepared. Well, that's one way to address it. I guess I'm also concerned because I know how important and what a gateway course Algebra I is. What are we going to do to make sure the kids are prepared in addition to saying, you can't take it because you don't have the required courses? Let's start with that one.
Well, what we've done, we've looked deeply at math and really, we've spent a couple of years, a year and a half, looking at math. And so we did change the course names. Middle school parents will hear pre-algebra in sixth grade, pre-algebra in seventh grade. And they're thinking, well, they've just had this course. But no, it's not like that. It's pre-algebra part one, where the child gets all of the sixth-grade standards, part of the seventh-grade standards. And then in pre-algebra part two, they get the second half of seventh grade, all of the eighth-grade standards. What we saw happening was some of those standards where there were gaps in them. And we kind of knew this intuitively. But Carrie put together an Algebra I placement screening to use to see exactly which standards were missed that are needed in Algebra I. And our children had a lot of gaps. But if you take an honors track in sixth grade, and that is three years, sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade standards in three years, I mean, three years of standards in one year, that is very difficult for a young child to do. Whereas, think about elementary school. They were getting one grade level of standards a year and being successful. It's not that we don't have children that can do that, but I'm not sure that we have the numbers that we were letting go through those courses. So what we tried to do was not say, no, you can't take it. We tried to slow the train down so the children didn't burn out because they started in seventh grade with Algebra I. And then as we looked forward, we saw that they were not going past the higher-level math classes after 10th grade. So it's not that we don't want our children taking it, we do. We just want them taking it when they're ready for it because it is a ninth-grade class. We feel like it's very appropriate in seventh grade, I mean, excuse me, eighth grade, and appropriate for some in seventh grade. And that's all we're trying to do, is put the child in the right seat. So that the child's successful, not just one year. And maybe they're successful, but it's frustrating. But they're successful throughout the span of their time in Richmond too and beyond because that's what a 21st-century graduate is going to need to be.
You, Dee, thank you so much for that. First of all, I want to applaud you for taking a very, very hard look at a very difficult subject and looking internally at what we can do to improve ourselves and make it better. While at the same time, not simply cutting some folks off and artificially inflating the numbers next year that show that all of a sudden more middle schoolers are doing better well because fewer are taking Algebra I. So that's, and you've done a great job of explaining the plan for doing that. I also am a little bit concerned about programs at some of the high schools, Spring Valley, some of the high schools, where without that strong performance, they're not going to qualify to get into those magnet programs there.
We've looked at that. The first course, and Dawn's here, so she keeps me straight on this. The first course at Discovery is geometry, algebra. Help me remember.
Right.
Okay, so they could take Algebra I, take Algebra II, and then geometry. So they can do that in an eighth-grade year. Now granted, I'm not saying that we're not letting seventh graders in to Algebra I. We just want it to be the right seventh grader. And Carrie and I had over 100-plus conversations with parents last year. Some, we said, your child scored really well on this test. And you won the lottery, you can come on in. And we had parents that said no. That they did that first go around with one child and they struggled later on. And that's what we're trying to do. We really try to look at every child as an individual and all of their data and all of their history and not make just lumped-sum blanket statements about anyone.
Last question. Do we consider a cohort group that would include the categories that Ms. Manning and Brill always talked about, magnet programs, honor students, junior scholars, maybe to look at sort of what's unique about them and their performance as we examine sort of what to do next with them?
That's part of the task force, honestly. Because we need a large group coming together and a think-tank environment to really continue to dig down.
And as we look at these honors program, or honors courses, that will be part of that too because Dr. Mosley is partnering with Dr. Prozios and working closely with her as we start reexamining and realigning our honors courses at middle school.
Thank you so much. Other questions, comments on the board? Thank you very much, ladies. Next on our agenda is the agenda items for our May 12 meeting, which will be at Polo Road Elementary. Dr. Hamm?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We'll have a student focus that evening, a report on our third-quarter financial statement, a report on internet safety and digital citizenship, a report on our one-to-one student computing program evaluation, and a report on our bus fleet and the options of purchasing and leasing buses.
Are there any additional requests from the board for an agenda item for the April 20, the next board meeting or any future board meeting? May 12 or any future board meeting?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Manning.
Just as a future follow-up, in our budget, Dr. Miley, you mentioned there were some areas where we were looking to cut the budget that you felt certain we could meet those as minimums. When you get further into the process, which I understand won't be the next meeting or may not even be in the next couple of months. But if you could please follow up with us on where we sort of end up with that and what the plan is. Thank you.
Thank you. Other recommendations or suggestions?
Mr. Jackson.
Ms. Manning.
I know that I requested for a future agenda item and it's here at the expanded choice process. I actually want to at some point, whether it be in an open session or in a workshop-type session, I want to talk about the impact of our schools, not just the choice process, but how our schools are faring with regard to equity, diversity in our schools, how, making sure that all of our schools are on equal footing with resources and how that choice process has panned out, attendance, all of that. I want to be able to discuss that at length.
Thank you very much. Other recommendations or suggestions or requests from the board? Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the second public participation session. No one signed up to speak to the board. However, if there is anyone in the audience who would like to come and address the board, you can feel free to do so at this time. Thank you. Next on our agenda will be board and superintendent comments. I'll start with you, Mr. Plank.
First, let me start with happy birthday, Dr. Hamm.
Thank you.
You know, this is, it's been a neat night for, starting with the turnaround awards and where the focus was on, you know, self-improvement and to turn around and improve and get better. And I appreciate all the presenters tonight that embodied that philosophy. Dr. Miley, again, I appreciate your accessibility and your transparency and the time you were able to be available to us as a group and individually. It means a lot. This is, it's a tough balance to take a budget and try to meet the needs of the district and... and try to meet the needs of the district and all the programs that we want to do, but at the same time, be good stewards of the taxpayers' money. And as a business owner, that, this type of millage increase impacts me directly. But as Mr. Manning said earlier, it's the DNA of Richland Two. You know, that we are always striving for that self-improvement as a district. And as a result, to maintain that culture, there are times where we need to see these types of increases. And frankly, for this budget, with a percent that is lower than what the average has been, I think that we've done that. I think we've been good stewards of the taxpayers' money and at the same time, working to be able to help improve and continue this culture. So thanks so much for that, I really appreciate it. And thanks to Blythewood Middle for your hospitality. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Plank. Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Yes, I would just like to say congratulations to the turnaround students, their parents, and the faculty and staff was just so proud to see all of them turn around. So thank you. And Dr. Davis, thank you so much for your words of encouragement by asking them to turn around, but don't look back. So thank you for that. Dr. Hamm, I'd like to wish you a happy birthday, and sorry you had to spend your entire birthday doing schoolwork, but we really appreciate that. And also, Dr. Mosley, thank you so much for that presentation. That was really, really awesome. And also, to the budget team, thank you so much. I know how hard you work. So thank you for putting up with my questions and answering them, and I appreciate all that you do.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins. Ms. Brill?
Thank you, everybody, and thank you especially the financial team. You all have worked really diligently, and I've been doing this since 2006. And this is the first year I really had a good understanding of where we were going and why we were going there and how. And I do know that Craig did call Dr. Fleming and got his blessings. So I think that was an important outcome, and thank you for doing that, because we struggled every year with how we were going to do it and why we were going to do it and what the outcome was going to be. And I understood from our many workshops, and I appreciate that you did that, Mr. Chair, what we had to do and why we had to do it, that reassessment, and the value of the mill has decreased. And things have really changed a lot in the county. So it's an interesting process this year. But I think we've been very prudent and very wise, and really appreciate all of you all's help, helping us to get there. And I appreciate the other board members understanding how we had to do this. These were not easy decisions to make. We thought long and hard about it, and I think we just, we really did it well, and I really feel proud. And thank you for your hospitality, Clarissa. It was beautiful to be out at Blythewood Middle School. I had to stop and remember, "How did you get there?", but I made it. And your kids look great, and appreciate, you know, everything you did for us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Cheryl Kauscheparker?
First, I'd like to thank Charis Muzik, her first, coming to the end of her first year as principal here, Richland School District, Blythewood Middle, everything was just great. Very nice. The turnaround awards, it was just really outstanding, a very good job. And I don't know, that's always a highlight. That's always a highlight every year, it's just great seeing the kids. Congratulations to all the award and recognition recipients. And I'm going to tell you, folks, this sure has been an experience being on this side of the table dealing with the budget, and on that side of the table dealing with the budget. The good thing about it, you get to see both sides and all the efforts and the hard work that goes into this entire process from both sides. So I feel very fortunate to be able to have that experience. I'm glad it's over with, and so we can move on. And thank you, Harry, to the hard work of your department and the executive staff as well. And happy birthday, Debbie. Thank you.
Ms. Maggie?
Dino Everone's comments about the budget process and all that we've gone through to get here. My standard, thank you all for being here and taking time out of your personal lives to be here and to be a part of this process. I respect your time. Principal Muzik, awesome, thank you for your hospitality tonight. There was so much that went on that I enjoyed, the awards, the 525,600 minutes that go on here, that was pretty impactful. And Dr. Davis's comments about the turnaround awards earlier, "Turn around, but don't turn back", pretty much resonated with me tonight, so thank you all.
Thank you very much. Mr. Manning?
No comment.
Ms. Manning? Dr. Hamm?
First of all, I want to say, I couldn't have had a better birthday. So thank you, everybody, for your good wishes. My morning started out at the airport at 7:30 this morning, where Richland Northeast High School students, who are part of the Palmetto Center for the Arts, got to have their artwork unveiled that's going to be displayed at the airport. So people from all over the country, and maybe from all over the world, are going to see the truly outstanding artwork that our students do. It knocks your socks off. It's hard to believe that students and not professionals did this artwork. They are professionals. So that was a really joyous occasion for me. So proud of those art students. And then last night, I got to be with our junior scholars. You know, you look out at, you know, most of our auditorium filled with these middle school students whose academic achievement is really extraordinary. And we know they're going to go into high school and college and careers and be fabulous. And it is so exciting to celebrate their accomplishments with them. Tonight, I had the pleasure of working with the board, and we are so fortunate to have a group of board members who can do the diligence and make the difficult decisions about the board that they did tonight. So it has been a very happy birthday. My gratitude to the board for the work that you have done. And then moving on into the future, I want to say that next week, we have an exciting event. Richland Two has great teachers, and we're going to be recognizing our teachers of the year at a gala. And for the very first time ever, on Thursday night, we will be streaming that live. So any of you who want to see that will be able to participate in that as well by looking for it on our website. So that's really exciting. We are truly blessed with extraordinary teachers. And then finally, I want to thank Dr. Miley and the finance staff for the work that they did on the budget. Great job, y'all. And again, thanks, everybody, for the happy birthday. I have never been sung "Happy Birthday" from a... They sounded great. Usually, you put a group of people together and say, sing "Happy Birthday", it sounds pretty crummy, quite honestly. But I thought they sounded wonderful, and it made my day.
Let me say thank you very much also, and certainly won't repeat all the things that have been said, because I certainly agree with every one of them. And thanks to all of the people from Ms. Muzik going down and all of those who are here tonight. I think looking introspectively is a difficult look. So Dr. Mosley and the team, you're working, that's a challenge, and I recognize that. And so I want to applaud you for being willing to look at ourselves first before others look at us and ask us those questions, and be able to come up with a plan that's going to make a difference in the lives of the children that we serve. It's so interesting, when we all look at the data, we see how our kids do in middle school, I mean, elementary school, have the lull in middle school, and then pick back up in high school. So kind of interesting, because when you look at how students end up out of Richland Two in math, in language arts, and all the subject areas, and in terms of SAT and ACT, and on and on, the end result almost gives you hope. I mean, we don't want to have to go through the pain of middle school, but the end result gives you that light at the end of the tunnel, that kids graduate from this district with a high level of performance, academic performance, as measured on any standard assessed. The challenge is to make sure that we continue to help them along that path as they go through that lull of middle school. So thank you very much, very, very much for your hard work. Again, Dr. Hamm, happy birthday to you and to all of you with us tonight. Thank you for being here, and we look forward to seeing you again in the future. Chair, will entertain a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We are adjourned. Have a good night.